Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our Monday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Can we all please rise and pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this time I'd like to introduce members of the commission as well as staff that are here this evening. To my immediate right is Jim Fitzsimmons, who's a member of the commission, commission member. Jeff Cohen, also a commission member. And next to Jeff is Jamie Hine, who's an alternate. And at the side table there is David Parrott, who's also an alternate on the commission. And to my left is J. P. Vanoyt, who is the vice chairperson. Next to J. P. is Steve Allenson, who is our secretary. And at the staff table is Cheryl L. Tubby, our reporting secretary. And next to Cheryl L. is Kevin Pajini, our town planner. And I'm Jim Seikter, the chairperson of the commission. Our first order of, or next order of business is consideration, approval of our minutes of our March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Needing any commission members, any corrections, additions to the minutes? If none, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the minutes as written.
I have a motion on the minutes. Should we have a second?
Second.
Second, why, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Aye.
And anybody opposed? All right, before we get on to our first order of business on the agenda, one item that's not going to be heard this evening is old business. It's on number two, site plan, self-storage units, nine fifty North Main Street, Wallingford LLC, eighty-six at the Barnes Grove. That applicant has requested that we not take up that application this evening. So I suspect it'll be taken up at our next meeting. Which brings us now to our first order of business that we'll hear this evening. It's continuation of a special permit from the new administration center and associate underground parking lot, Choak School, Rosemary Hall, fifty-nine North Elm Street. If the applicant would please come to the table, begin preparing for a presentation. And Mr. Allenson, please note all new correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have correspondence from Elizabeth Landau, received March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Correspondence from Kevin Pajini, town planner, to Patrick Durbin, CFO, dated March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. A document entitled Choak Admissions Building Height Diagram containing two pages. Second page entitled Average Grade Plan. I do not note a date. Correspondence to Kevin Pajini from Philip Uker dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. A second correspondence to Kevin Pajini from Philip Uker dated March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. This one is titled Ray Alternative to Current Proposal. The prior document is entitled Ray Garage Exit Driveway Concerns. Memorandum to the Planning and Zoning Commission from Department of Engineering dated April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Correspondence to Kevin Pajini, town planner, from Brian K., PLA, dated April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Correspondence to Kevin Pajini, town planner, from David Sullivan, dated April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, with an attachment with traffic information. Correspondence from to George DeBregard from David Sullivan, P. E., dated November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two. A document entitled Choak Admissions Building Height Diagram with multiple pages. Second page also entitled Average, is entitled Average Grade Plan, excuse me, with a date on it, March twenty-twenty-three. It's marked received April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. A signage and pavement markings plan dated receipt April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Document entitled Site Section, two pages. Second page entitled View from Christian Street dated receipt April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Memorandum from the Department of Engineering to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Document entitled Building Height Conformance Problem dated receipt April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And correspondence from, email correspondence from Stephen Lazarus to Kevin Pajini dated April ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. And that is all I can do.
Thank you, Mr. Allenson. And the applicant, please introduce themselves and continue with your presentation from last month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your record, my name is Dennis Sanaviva. I'm attorney with the Sanaviva Law Firm. I represent the owner and applicant Choak Rosemary Hall Foundation. To my immediate right is Patrick Durbin, CFO of Choak Rosemary Hall. At his right is Brian K., who's a senior landscape architect with SLR. We have in the audience Emily Foster, who is our traffic engineer, also from the engineering firm of SLR. We have George DeBregard and Kevin Smith, both architects from Robert A. M. Stern Architects. Just by way of a quick summary, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you may recall that last month we talked about the property being identified as an odd-shaped ninety-six-plus acre parcel of land running from the corner, southeast corner of North Elm and Christian Street, south to Center Street. The land area more specifically involved in this application is about six and a half acres at or near the southeast corner of North Elm and Christian. We filed a special permit application, as you know, it's before you tonight, seeking approval for the construction of a fourteen thousand square foot building. It would be the admissions building designed to house that office and be a welcome center for Choak. In addition, in an effort to provide adequate parking for the new building, while remaining cognizant of Choak's desire to develop its properties using best management practices, we have designed the construction of the building together with an underground parking facility, which we made some presentation about that at the last meeting. So that's why we're here. What we did, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do going forward is we looked at the minutes from the last meeting that you just approved. And we also received a letter or a memo from Mr. Pajini, the town planner, this is dated March twentieth, in which there were, he directed us to answer some of the issues that were raised by you and other commissioners at the last meeting. And so what I'd like to do is to, instead of preparing, presenting the application all over again, is to go through those issues that were left to respond to at the last meeting. And with that, Mr. Chairman, there is a, again, a March twenty memo from Kevin Pajini kind of our directive. He wanted us to talk about some signage and striping, especially to the underground parking facility. Brian's going to talk about that in a few minutes. He wanted us to provide a calculation for the height of the proposed building. We have the architects here to discuss that for you, an illustration showing the highest peak of the roof, along with calculations for the measurement, which we have done. And provide an elevation of the northern facade showing the side profile of the entrance exit of the underground parking lot, as shown from the sidewalk heading southeast down to Christian Street. There were other comments in your minutes, Mr. Chair. You indicated that you wanted to see a copy of the traffic report, and obviously we've submitted that since the last meeting. You also asked us to provide a construction sequence that town planner had talked about, the one entrance coming in and coming out. You'd like to have a presentation on construction sequence and entrances and safety during construction. Again, Brian will address that tonight. Commissioner Cohen talked about one potential condition of approval to protect pedestrian traffic with sidewalks throughout the construction activities. And Brian will be mindful of that in his presentation. Commissioner Fitzsimmons also mentioned that in the memo from Department of Engineering, the March eighth memo, town engineer talked about some, some improvements that could be made to the intersection based upon that T-two center meeting at the intersection. And you may note, I'm sure you've seen it, both in April fifth and April sixth memorandum from the Department of Engineering, there's an acknowledgement from the town engineer that in its meeting, in per meeting with Choak, that they have agreed, well, we have agreed to make and undertake several of the improvements suggested for that intersection that were part of those prior discussions. So again, in our plans, we're acknowledging that we will replace curb ramps at all four corners. We paved the intersection. We striped the crosswalk and stop bars with epoxy paint. Strike stop lettering at stop bars with epoxy paint and install school advanced crossing signs in different locations that are noted in that report. So we've incorporated that. The engineer, town engineer, has also incorporated that into the report as part of the presentation. So I did want to point out that those suggestions have already been incorporated into our plan. And then I just wanted to finish here, I think, Mr. Chair, just to have Patrick talk, Patrick Durbin, talk about. It's probably something that you already know, but just to make that statement that, you know, pedestrian safety, the protection of not only school children, but everyone in that area is of utmost importance to Choak. It makes all the sense in the world. I can well imagine if there was any sort of catastrophic event involving any Choak student. And that's the sort of thing that resonates throughout the entire, not just the town, but the state and certainly to their area of schooling. And so it's a very, very important factor. And I just wanted Patrick to sort of finish up our presentation and acknowledge that for your record. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Brian to go to the easel and respond to the questions that were left open at the last meeting.
Yeah, so Emily from our office will take some of the traffic comments. But I wanted to generally walk you through what construction sequence would look like on the site. So just orient everybody again, North Elm Street, Christian Street, the driveway entrance. So I'm just going to put these down so you kind of know what's happening.
If you would simply perhaps get on the other side so the public could see better.
Yep, yep. So once again, what's highlighted here in yellow is our S and A controls as part of the project. In working with the town engineer and the town planner, we've all come under the agreement that a construction entrance here and at the future driveway exit makes the most sense with a one-way access in here and coming out this way. Generally, the sequence of that excavation of this parking area is going to, is going to happen relatively first. And with all of that kind of process kind of happening out on Christian Street. So that's when a majority of the, of the site work is going to be happening. As we get further into the project and framing of this building starts to happen and the parking facility is, you know, getting its footings done, getting stuff like that, this area will end up getting cut off. So at that time, there'll be far less site work happening. We'd reengage a two-way exit at this point here where the curb cut already exists today. As it relates to pedestrians during construction, all of our work is within, let's just say, the granite posts that happen that are there today. So we, our intent is to leave the sidewalks open as they are. During large events, when we know truck traffic would be heavier than usual, Choak said they'd have a flagger out there directing traffic and, you know, making it safe for, for everyone. Allison, the town engineer, reminded us that a highway permit would be required for that work in the right of way. So that will be coordinated with her at that time. Additionally, for just everyday student traffic during construction, Choak has, has gone ahead and done some improvements at those mid-block crossings that lead here. A lot of those pathways funnel them to those, those crossing points. And they'll be directing their students at that time to basically work around this area. You know, they're, they're going to be able to cross the four-way at, at alternate locations to avoid this spot. And also they can, they can use some of the existing pathways that exist to work around this area at that time. But in general, that's, that's how we see construction phasing happening and site access for pedestrians and, and vehicles.
What do you estimate as far as the length of time of construction?
I'd say about a year. But yeah. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Emily.
Well, before you do that, just any commission members, any questions on this?
I'm going to offer something, Mr. Chairman, before Emily starts talking. And that's just to point out, and I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to read the memo from your town engineer relative to the police obtaining aerial video footage at that intersection and then reporting on that. And I think Emily is going to talk to, with the fact that we did some analysis also that actually dovetailed perfectly into what the experience was with the town.
Sure. Yeah, so SLR did observations at the intersection on March twenty-first to review what a typical day, both for Choak traffic and as well as the other nearby Wallingford schools. And we found that there were two periods, one in the morning and one in the afternoon, where the traffic and pedestrian congestion was higher than normal. It was really only ten minutes during the morning and twenty minutes during the afternoon. And it, I mean, it took ten minutes to clear out in the morning and less than twenty minutes in the afternoon. And something to note, too, is just in the afternoon, we did observe over fifteen Wallingford school buses go through that intersection. One in particular that stopped on either end of the intersection to let kids out, which contributed a lot to the traffic and congestion at the intersection. But throughout the rest of the day, queues were minimal and traffic congestion was minimal. So it really is just a small trade-off for the pedestrian and traffic safety that you get with an always-stop control and single lane approaches at that intersection. And then this is the signing marking plan that we have. So it's pretty simple. Double yellow center line on the driveway and a stop sign four feet away from the existing sidewalk with a corresponding stop sign. And then we'll also have a warning slow pedestrian crossing ahead sign about halfway up the driveway just to warn vehicles of potentially crossing pedestrians. But again, they'll have to stop before the sidewalk to see crossing pedestrians before they proceed onto Christian Street. And then finally, we also looked at the site distances at the driveway location. And this is part of the traffic memo, but this is a visual of it. So intersection site distances were calculated based on DOT Highway Design Manual. And what we did was we used the eighty-fifth percentile speed of Christian Street, which was another DOT parameter. And based on the speed, three hundred and ninety-seven feet of site distance is required to look left and right out of the driveway. And that is the red triangles here. So you'll see that we, we do make that. And just note, looking left, you'll come into the always-stop, which you really only need to see to the always-stop because the vehicles will be stopped before they proceed. But we're showing that we even reach further than the intersection. And then the orange is just showing the views of vehicles as they're turning the intersection, that you still can see them. And basically, these are used to make sure that the area is clear of obstructions for the driver pulling out. So nothing will be within these triangles so that there will be adequate site distance. Any questions?
Any questions, commission members?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one. Is that, you just showed the, that last item that you had there. That meant to show that the distance that someone pulling out of that parking lot could see both to the left and to the right, is that?
Yeah, so it's the required minimum site distance for a vehicle that stopped at the, at the driveway here to be able to make a safe decision to turn out. So it's, you know, the, the distance for them to determine if there's enough gap and to be able to turn with enough time to safely get out of the driveway. But as you can see, there's, there's more site distance. This is just the minimum required based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed.
Okay, and so is that meant to show, what is that, what is that based on? Is that based on some state public highway publication or something like that?
Yeah, it's based on some federal calculation that, that the Connecticut DOT then also adopted. And so it's based on the speed of the vehicles traveling on the road, perception reaction time, and then the time it takes to turn out of the driveway. So it's a calculation that you do based on, the input is the speed of the vehicles on Christian Street.
And you may know this, but just to, for clarity purposes, you know, the, the design is based on the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So it's not the posted speed because many of us will travel, not me, of course, but many of us travel in excess of the posted limit. So they look at, they have to determine that eighty-fifth percentile and then design for that number, not just the posted speed. So usually it's conservative.
It's, yeah, it's very conservative. Basically fifteen percent of, only fifteen percent of cars will be going over the eighty-fifth percentile speed.
Yeah, and, and these questions are really just meant, because I'm trying to understand what this is showing. So if, is this meant to basically show that this entrance to the parking lot is far enough away from the intersection where somebody should be able to see up to the intersection and meet that, and meet the, that requirement, that distance requirement?
That, and then it's also just meant to show that with, because the whole triangle needs to be clear of obstructions for a vehicle to see. So it's meant to show that nothing on the site itself will, will obstruct that view as well. So the, so the fence or any vegetation or anything like that.
And that's what I was getting at because I wanted to make sure that this is based upon this particular site and that somebody has actually gone out and taken a look at what is in that triangle. Because we, I'm not sure how much everybody has seen, but there were photographs that were taken, that were presented to us. And I think the point of that letter and those photographs were to show that the fence that runs along there, I, I think that person's point was, it appeared that that fence was an obstruction. And this is, this is meant to show that it is, it would not be, is that?
Correct, correct. So the fence will, will, will have to be modified when the driveway comes in. So we'll make sure that it won't be within the triangles. And then just to note, too, when you're, you know, coming up to, when you're coming up a driveway and turning, the parameter is that you're fifteen feet back from the edge of the roadway. That's generally where a driver will be when they're making that decision to turn out. So you're really, basically, it's hard to see that far away, but you're basically just at the fence point. So then if you think about it, when you're looking out, you, you won't be in the, the picture was taken kind of staring directly at the fence, but you'll already be ahead of the fence when you're, when you're making that decision.
Did I hear you to say that the fence is going to be moved?
No, so it'll just be, I mean, it'll, right now, it's, it's along this whole frontage, but it'll have, parts of it will have to be taken out for the driveway and for the walkway.
Thank you. Take your question, why the different color and shading when you go?
So the red is the minimum required site distance. The orange is really just showing the view sheds of the cars turning from the intersection.
I understand that, but when you're going west, it's a different color. It's a, it's a little darker. And when you're going east, it's a little lighter, maybe the shade.
To make it a printer or the overlapping, it wasn't meant to be two colors.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So that, I hope, Mr. Chairman, addressed the questions that were left from the last meeting about the possible inclusion of the suggestions relative signage and striping from the T-two center meeting, which we agreed to incorporate and have incorporated into our plan. We talked a bit about, Brian talked about pedestrian traffic within the sidewalk throughout the construction activities. I'm hoping that met the concerns that you were looking at. Happy to answer any questions. The construction sequence, we talked about that. And so I think, you know, sort of the, the odd issue, I think it's odd, but unusual, unusual for me. I've been doing this for a while, is the height of the, how the height of the building was measured. That was left, I think, as one of the comments from town planner Pajini. I wanted to have a breakdown of determination. So I'm going to ask our architect to go to the board and explain to you how that determination was made. Before he does that, I just wanted to point out that it wasn't part of your record, apparently, from what I heard Secretary Allenson read, but there was a memo, actually it was an email, I'm sorry, from the architect to Mr. Pajini. It was sent this afternoon. This was literally at the request, and I spoke to the town attorney. She suggested that we have the architect represent that the design that's before you complies with a height limitation of thirty feet from the average grade provided in the Wallingford zoning regulations. So I'm going to offer that, Mr. Chairman, as another exhibit, part of your record. And I'm not sure.
Can you give it to our recording secretary, please?
Thank you. George DeBregard from Robert Stern Architects. Let's see you again. So the first part of calculating the building's height is determining the average rate of the building. Can you see this diagram?
Yeah.
And so we followed the Wallingford zoning regulations in order to do that by determining the elevation of the building at the corner points of the building and averaging that in order to produce an average rate height. We then use that average rate height and our building elevation from the, excuse me. Uses that number, and this is detailed in a little, in something that's a little bit easier to read than the smaller version, but so you understand it, of the larger version, that the Wallingford regulations, which is typical of zoning regulations, when you're dealing with a sloped roof, allow you to calculate the building height at the midpoint of the slope of the roof between the ridge and the eve. You take that average point and you measure that to the average rate. And so that is the exhibit that you have in front of you. Furthermore, that is, that measurement, the other point of the measurement, the diagram that you see, is that that measurement, which is along this side of the building, is the highest mass of the building. So we've taken the midpoint between the ridge and the eve, measured that thirty, that's within our thirty feet to the average rate.
Do we have any questions on the, on the town planning? Mr. High.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I would just have a question to, to the town planner, just to confirm that the town planner agrees with that calculation, how that calculation was done.
I think we still need to explain a bit more of the west elevation because there is a little bit of discrepancy between the, I guess it would be the part of the chimney that kind of sticks up above the roof.
Yeah. So the way that the, the way that the Wallingford regulations are written, it's the slope of the roof between the ridge and the eve. Chimneys and other architectural details are not addressed in the Wallingford regulations. So we have not, for instance, counted the chimney height as part of this calculation.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Puccini?
I mean, essentially it's more of a, a wall as a sort of chimney, and we sort of, when you look at the north elevation of the roof.
Yeah. So the, 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 sort of the architectural style of this building involves a roof that's captured by the brick wall of the, at the gable end. So if your question is, is the, we have a sloped roof and then we have the sloping edge of the roof is captured, and then there are chimneys that raise above that. So if you're asking about, I guess that's what I'm...
Well, there were questions, worries regarding the roof is flat, gambarrel, or... This was from, uh... Regarding, since the illustration seems to only include flat and gable roof options.
I believe that, if that question is from the bottom of the, one of the memos, that actually appeared to me to be a reference to the Wallingford zoning code, which only includes slopes and flat roofs. It's the last sentence of the... Want that involved? I think I have a question about the level of detail. If you don't hear my question.
Can I ask the commission, do they, do they seem clear that this does comply? Is there questions that they would have?
Well, I guess I'd ask you first, as far as your opinion, Mary, that being...
I mean, they're applying for a compliant building, so they're bound to a compliant building. So I think the burden of proof would be on the applicant to show that they're compliant in that sense. So I think it comes down to the interpretation of the chimney structure, I guess, aside.
Well, our regulations don't speak toward the chimney, correct?
Correct.
So if that's a chimney, it's not, our regulations don't speak toward the chimney, correct?
Correct, yeah. So I guess my answer would be yes until...
If I may add, this is Kevin Smith, also from Robertson Architects. I just, the Wallingford regulations don't speak to chimneys, but most other zoning height regulations in the state of Connecticut do make very specific mention of chimneys, towers, other non-occupied, that are less than a hundred square feet, usually is the way it's written. So certainly the fact that the diagram that is in your regulations that shows a chimney and just sort of ignores it made us think that that, makes us think that by common practice, chimneys and end walls and things like that are excluded from the regulations. So... Voice of older age.
I might go a little further, Mr. Chairman, by my, you know, to your point, if you look at your regulations, section 2.3C, measurements of building heights, I don't think I need to offer this, it's in your regulations, but again, when it identifies, I'm happy to provide it, Mr. Chairman, when it's measuring roof points, heights rather, it talks about midpoint of roof, it ignores the antenna and the chimney in the diagram. So I'm happy to offer that. And that's again, 2.3C of your regulations. So in measuring building heights, it does not include, to your point, the chimneys or an antenna, although I don't know they have an antenna that much these days. The other part is that you do have supplementary regulations, 6.1 of your regulations, that talk about height limitations, and as Kevin just points out, our Kevin, spires, water tanks, and similar structures occupying an aggregate of not more than ten percent of the building area, not to exceed fifty feet in height may be erected. So you have another regulation that talks about, so if someone were to say, oh, why don't you build a chimney that's three hundred feet tall? Well, you can't, because you do have another regulation that limits it to fifty feet. So the roof, the chimney, spire, antenna, those are not included in your, under your regulations. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, any commission members? Mr. High.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I assume that the applicant has seen this email, 405-23BB, and the corresponding diagram, 405-23AA, that was submitted by Stephen Lazarus, who is a registered architect and appears regularly in front of us. And with respect to the diagram entitled Building Height Performance Problem, on the first page there, there is a, to the right, there's a dotted line at the top, which seems to show a height that is beyond, a building height that is beyond the regulation, that does not just include the chimneys. At least that's, that's how I think this. Maybe I'm wrong. But that's what I see here in this diagram, and I'm wondering if you have taken a look at that and what your response to that would be.
Do you have it for me?
I think they may have it, I don't, Mr. Chairman, but I do remember reading the email, and I remember that Mr. Lazarus, from my respect, said that it seems, didn't say definitively that it wasn't compliant, but it seems to him. And so that's why we have the actual architect who's signed the plan here to respond, opposed to just taking, you know, perhaps what was reviewed either, something provided by staff. But, and again, I did, just, I might, just to finish the thought, and I recognize that it's become an issue where the applicant doesn't think so, because again, they're spending an awful lot of effort and frankly, money on recognized architectural firms to make sure that they're compliant with the code. You can well imagine what would happen if, right as they're applying for the C O, Amy's up on the, Amy's up on the ladder, and she says it's thirty feet, two inches, it's a bit of a problem. So I'm not being cavalier. The point is that the risk is really ours. And our position is that, and trust me, I've reviewed this with the architects several times, the risk is ours. Chode understands that, that they're very specific about being compliant with the requirements. And so everything that we've done in the past thirty days since the last meeting, these became issues, has been to confirm that height.
And I appreciate that. I assume that you have.
Sure.
There clearly, but when a registered architect who comes before us on a regular basis, deals with these regulations on a regular, comes to us and says, there may be a problem here, and when you know that there is considerable objection to the project, I'm looking to protect ourselves and the commission as well, and I don't want to do anything that may jeopardize an approval, that we may get. So that's why I'm asking the Town Planner, and I'm asking the applicant what its response is to what Mr. Lazarus says, because, you know, I look at this diagram, and this diagram would suggest that there's a portion of the roof, aside from the chimneys, that is over the height limitation, from what I can see in this diagram. And I'm, maybe, maybe somebody can tell me I'm reading it wrong. I don't know, I'm just taking a look at this.
Again, I think you respond, and that's the reason that during my conversation today with the town attorney, the thought was to place the architects squarely on the, on the issue, to have them represent, which they've done, that's the exhibit I submitted tonight, that it does in fact comply with the thirty foot requirement. I might add, I counseled my client, who, we didn't need my advice on this point, but I said, listen, during the course of construction, that average grade can change, there's a lot of construction work going on at the site, can you imagine? I said, you better be awfully careful. So if you hit, you're hitting ledge, or something happens where that parking facility is a foot higher than you anticipate, it's not quite as deep, all of that has to be taken into consideration, especially when you design a building that's thirty feet in height. So I appreciate your sentiment, I understand, I, again, I respect Mr. Lazarus, Chode's used him many times in the past. I think it was prudent, I think he did it correctly when he said it seems, and let it, and left it to having the architect who's working on the plan confirm that they have reviewed it and are representing the same to this commission.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, can I ask the Town Planner to pass over the email that Mr. Sibila gave you from the town attorney? Because we don't have that.
No, it was, I'm sorry, it was a telephone conversation.
Oh, what was the P C P for you?
Oh, that was the, that was from the architect.
Steve Lazarus.
No, that was from our architect confirming that the height was thirty feet.
Oh, okay. I, I'm sorry, I heard it to be... Gotcha. So this is to Kevin, the town attorney, the Town Planner, from the associate saying it confirms.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, I heard attorney, town, I thought you said town attorney, and I'm thinking, I don't have that. So, okay.
I did speak to attorneys.
Okay. And so would you mind refreshing the, I, you said it so quickly, I thought this was a memo from the town attorney.
I love talking about attorneys.
Okay. I'm not paying you for minutes.
So in a conver, this is an issue, and of course, you know, we want to make certain that you're comfortable, the commission's comfortable, neighbors are comfortable. And actually, I'm concerned, I want to make sure that the client's comfortable. So we've looked at it several times, and in order, and I, to a large extent, I don't know necessarily that it's your planner's bailiwick to confirm the height other than what is provided to him. So in a conversation with the town attorney, she felt that it would be important for the architect of record, the one who designed this build, to make just that bold statement so that you have that before you. Because there is, you know, I suppose with almost any of the regulations, that's what we lawyers do, trying to find ways to interpret, make them work for our client's position. But, so when that suggestion came, I called the architectural firm, and they prepared that memorandum in compliance with my request.
Thank you. If I could, no, is that it? I recall the Town Planner, two planners ago, Linda Bush, who gave me some advice, you know, when I was serving, and she told me very clearly, Wallingford has, Connecticut has permissive zoning. It has to specifically state that it's permitted. You know, very similar to, actually, we took it two years ago, you know, saying we wouldn't allow medical marijuana dispensaries, because if we didn't say it, they could, they could apply. So we have permissive zoning. As I look at our diagram, 2.3C, and I look at this picture, I don't think, based upon what I'm looking at, on the Chode admissions building height diagram, it complies, because the elevation of the roof midpoint does show an upper level. Are these, are those working chimneys on the end, or is it architectural design?
Sorry.
Is it a working chimney?
Sorry, but then, are you, so are you asking also about, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, is it, is it a working chimney, or is it architectural? Okay. So based upon this drawing, and comparing to the drawing on page thirty of our zoning book, I don't think this is matching, because this shows a chimney and a roof antenna. But this, this shows the elevation of the roof midpoint to be above the third. Just to do that. Yeah. So again, I think because we have permissive zoning, our omission is not an error, it is just that, that it's not, it doesn't specifically call out and allow, which is why I think Steve Lazarus pointed out to the commission and other members.
Are we allowed these doors open? Is this pretty hot out there? Is that sound allowable?
Oh, sure. Just as long as the sun's not shining, and I think the sun's down, so I think we're good.
Is it hot this time?
Yeah.
So it's above roof?
Yes, it's above roof.
But it's humid?
It's, it's, is it too humid?
Any other commission members who would like to comment on that for a moment? Mr. Barron?
Yeah, just simply observed, Mr. Lazarus and Sam Sartre, they've been in business for, well, a lot of times, have been before us here several times, and it just seems to me, if he raises the point, and again, he's not saying it absolutely is, but he's raising the point that it may be, I would not want to proceed without at least having another meeting, and or with Mr. Lazarus, to find out how he's doing it compared to what the applicant is doing, and make sure it's right, because thirty feet means thirty feet, doesn't mean thirty and a half or thirty-two. And, you know, when you've got a building of this magnitude hanging on interpretations of what is thirty feet, I just, I would feel uncomfortable with the application.
Well, I guess Mr. Lazarus had not the ability to come here to the seating.
And he didn't come.
And he didn't come. We can have someone else come in at the next meeting and have another interpretation, and we're going to have another meeting and have those individuals come in and voice their, what their opinion may or may not be, and we can get into this circular, you know, of having people coming in and saying, I have a different interpretation. You know, I think we have an architect here that's made...
He's made, oh, he's made a flat representation.
He's made a representation, exactly. And I guess, and again, Mr. Puccini, because I know, Mr. Fitzsimmons is looking at this, looking at this sketch, and that's on the 405-23W. And you're measuring the thirty feet from the midpoint, is that correct? Let's get into just exactly how that's calculated.
And if you could speak up, please, sir? Let me read this. So it's the vertical distance from the mean finished grade, this is on that representation on page thirty, calculated by adding the elevation of the grade at each corner point of the building and dividing by the total number of points. And so it's to the highest point of any flat or mansored roof, including the top of a parapet, or to the highest mean level between the eve and the peak of gable hip and/or gambarrel roofline. A flat roof is one whose pitch has a rise of less than three inches and one foot of room, and it shall not apply to rooftop mechanical utility structures.
Okay. So based on the, on the exhibit, the thirty feet, we're measuring thirty feet at what point?
The midline of the roof.
And that's where the dotted line is, is that correct? And that's where the dotted line is, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. But I think the issue, question is the chimney.
Yeah, I know, but I just, let's just take this a little bit at a time here. So, the midpoint is that dotted line.
Correct.
And that dotted line is about, again, this isn't the scale, the dotted line is probably a foot or so below 30 feet, is that correct? Because the 30-foot line goes above the dotted line. Correct?
I think it's meant to say that the dotted line is 30 feet. That's supposed to be the elevation of the midpoint at 163.4.
This is your guys'...
And the elevation of the average period is 133.4. So, yes, the line is supposed to represent 30 feet.
The dotted line is at 30 feet above the mean grade.
Say that again? The dotted, is the dotted line 30 feet? Because you're, I'd like, just, just give me a chance here. You're showing here, you're showing 30 feet, and you're showing, you know, a line, a vertical line. And the vertical line that you're showing is above the dotted line. So, unless, my glasses aren't correct.
There are two heavy dashed lines.
Yeah, no, I got you.
And there is a measurement between those two lines that is 30 feet.
But it, but the, the 30-foot line goes above your dotted line. That's all. I'm just, just saying, is that an error or not an error?
Oh, sorry. That is a, that's an architectural convention, that's a dimension string. There's a hatch mark that is...
So, the bottom line is you didn't cut the string off at the 30 feet, or the dotted line, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, it's, if you look at the EQ, EQ line, it's a, it's just, the line doesn't end, it's where the lines intersect, that is the dimension that's being shown.
Okay. So, the dotted, again, I'm a little dense here, so you gotta help me out. The dotted line is exactly 30 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So then, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pacini. Then the question is, are the chimneys part of the roof, or are the chimneys chimneys?
I think that's the question, because they're essentially more of a wall. It's not just the chimney sticking out of the roof. I think, you know, Mr. Fitzsimmons mentioned that. But I'm leaning towards agreeing with Mr. Fitzsimmons on this one, only because I think the interpretation, I don't think they should be getting this close to the 30 feet. I think if they can bring it down, that would be preferred, obviously, at this point. We shouldn't be discussing inches up to 30 feet. If they want to apply for variance, they should have done that in the first place. So, I know they're saying they're being compliant, but are they stretching it?
So, I guess what you're saying is, though, then, in order to be compliant, based on your opinion, the chimneys would need to be eliminated. Is that correct?
At least the wall, yes.
Well, the wall, but the walls are the...
Well, the, technically, it's like a wall with two chimneys coming out.
Yeah, exactly.
That rises, it's hard to see without a 3D sketch.
So, basic, if you're looking at 23AA, and you see the, the drawing that's on, the sketch that's on the, on the right here. Okay, so if you're looking at that, then you're saying, where you see A, you know, the line between A and B, essentially that dotted line. Everything above that, you're saying, really should be then eliminated, correct?
Yes. And I think the question is still, what the style of the roof is from west elevation. So, I think that needs to be answered. And if there's this much, there's this much confusion, and the commission doesn't have clarity, I don't know how they can make a decision on this, unless the architect wants to expand.
Speak up, you're gonna have to speak up, Mr. Pacini, please.
He's a water. I think if the commission has this much confusion, and doesn't have the clarity they need, unless the architect can expand on this, I don't know if it needs to be continued, or if there's something they can do to lower the building, potentially to seemingly comply. I don't make the final decisions, though, I don't know whatever...
No, I understand. I'm just, just trying to get an understanding as far as, based on the regulations, in what you're indicating, are regulations, you know, say or don't say, or your interpretation?
I think someone could potentially make the argument that that's more of a parapet wall than it is a chimney. I think that's where Mr. Fitzsimmons was getting at, but that's kind of what I was looking at, as well as I looked at this for a very long time, so. I think that's where I'm at. I think it's just, they're taking the 30 feet, and they're, I think they're just pushing it to the, to the line.
Yeah, I know, they're pushing it to the line, but are they pushing it above? Question is, is it they're pushing it to the line? The question is, if they're pushing above the line?
Yeah, I think in my opinion, that they are above the line with that chimney structure.
Okay. I guess I go back to the... Sure. A couple of things. Number one is, you know, building height is generally determined at the time of CO. You look at your own, again, your own regulations, which is what I like to go back to.
Sure.
It says, the vertical distance from the mean finished grade. We don't have that yet. You know, we don't know what that is. We're telling you what the grades are currently, and how we've, how we've calculated it based upon that. So, it's, it's, the building height is determined at the time of issuance of the CO, prior to the issuance of the CO, when you see if everything is compliant. Is it code compliant? Is it zoning compliant? All those things. I mean, if we put the foundation in the wrong spot, and it now is all of a sudden encroaching on your, on your front yard or side yard, you didn't approve that, and now we have a problem, because that's a zoning violation. If this height isn't, is more than 30 feet, we have a problem. And again, we spent an awful lot of time, this is the first time I'm actually ever from a planner, but we've spent an awful lot of time going over this particular issue. Because again, Cho wants to have a comfort level. We don't want to, we don't want to provide you with information that's going to create, it's not a problem for you, honestly, it's a problem for us. Because we, you know, we build this thing, and then we go for the CO, and it's, you know, it's 32 feet tall. Really? So, I mean, I appreciate the concern that this commission is expressing, but at the end of the day, building height in your regulations, so as you look at the, at the mean finished grade, and then you start measuring, that's how you calculate it. We've given our estimate based upon the information we have. But we're comfortable, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that if the condition of approval is to make sure the building does not exceed 30 feet, and is zoning compliant, we're willing to be compliant with that and any other, all the other zoning requirements that you have. No, I, I appreciate that. But I guess the issue that, you know, Mr. Fitzsimmons raised, and our town planner, you know, is raising, what we're talking about here, is the, that the chimney, the wall, whatever that, whatever we want to call it there, that, if you're, in your excavation, if you're off by two feet, three feet, that's not gonna, that's not gonna make a lot of difference as far as whether or not that the chimney, the wall is in compliance or not. Because, you know, that wall, that chimney is more than, I think, I don't have the dimensions here, but it's more than three feet. I mean, that's, I'm not sure what the height is, but, you know, again, you're off by inches, that's one thing. But here, there's a notable difference in the height there. You know, that's, if you were to go and build this, just the way you're showing it, and then you go and measure it, at least from what I'm, what I'm getting from our town planner, and I think some of the comments that the commission's, at least one commission member's raised, that that's an issue. It's not a matter of, oh, you're only off by a couple inches, and oh, well, we can do something. You're off by feet, and a notable number of feet. So, that's, that's kind of, you know, my issue. I think we're, at least at this point in time, it's being, we're being told, or the general opinion, again, I don't want to put Mr. Pacini on the spot here by our town planner, that in fact, the chimney, the base wall, however we define it, that that's not kind of exempt from, from the calculation. Is that, is that fair to say, Mr. Pacini, or am I just kind of stumbling around here?
No, I would say that's fair. I guess it's a matter of interpretation, whether that's a parapet wall or not, but I think that's what each commissioner has to determine, whether or not that complies or doesn't.
I guess, you know, kind of been...
But there seems to be no...
Taking up the conversation. I guess I'd open it up to other, other commission members who may want to comment. Anyone? Well, let's start at the, well, we'll start with Mr. Cohen, and then we'll go to Mr. Hein, and then...
Yeah, you know, honestly, this conversation has confused me just a little bit. I look at Cho's drawing, and honestly, to me, it does look like it meets our regulations. I look at the memo from Mr. Lazarus, and it just adds, frankly, to my confusion. I would have liked to have him here to explain exactly what he's talking about, because he references different points on the roof that, you know, are not shown in Cho's study. You know, the commission needs to, you know, follow our regulations, and, you know, I think it would be difficult to, you know, frankly, move forward without, you know, a clear understanding of what we're going to improve as far as the height of this. Again, the Cho diagram, to Attorney's End's point, looks, looks okay, and it is going to be based on, you know, what your grade is ultimately going to be. I, so, without saying too much more, I think that's pretty much right. I don't want to add to confusion. But again, if we had an explanation on this other document that was received the other day, you know, I think that would clear things up.
All right.
At least for me. Thank you.
Mr. Hein, then we'll go to Mr. Fitzsimmons, and we'll work our way to the left.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, from my perspective, I have no doubt that Cho would, if this were approved, would build it exactly as shown in the plans. I have no doubt about that. I think the real issue is our own interpretation of our own regulations. And that's not a problem with Cho. That's a problem that we have to resolve. So, and I think that we should be pretty clear on how we're going to interpret that and resolve that issue before we move forward. That's my own personal opinion on it. I don't think, I will be voting on this tonight, but I do think that it makes some, some sense that we take a look at that issue and make sure that we're all on the same page as to how that's going to be interpreted. It seems to me that the real issue is what's included in that calculation and what's not included in that calculation.
Thank you. Mr. Parrott, do you want to comment? You're good.
They, they've said it all, and as soon as we heard the word "continue," I think just, let's stop. Okay? You know...
Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's not much to add, because I, as I, you know, raising it, and again, we, we just received 405-23A today, you know, the email. We didn't have it on. So, I, Kevin, I think I know through you, Mr. Chairman, was this reviewed by the town engineer? Did Allison get happy of this?
Not the current one, no. She reviewed the building height diagram. She didn't seem to have any issues with just that diagram, but I don't think she dealt into the specifics.
Right. I mean, again, this is where, again, similar to last month, I rely, we rely on the town staff to help us. You know, we're citizens, their staff. I, I really would, for Allison to comment on this, I know she's not here this evening, but I've, I've expressed my view.
Mr. Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything? I actually have some questions that I guess I didn't get a chance to chime in in time. But I'm looking at two different images of the north elevation. When I was a kid, I would get this magazine, and there was this game in there where they had two pictures. You had to find what was different in the two pictures. And so, yes, if not, there's others, right? Yeah. So, I'm looking at 405-23W, and it shows the north elevation. And I'm looking at the colored image, which looks like it's the same or close to the same. But there's a horizontal line between the two chimneys that seems to be, at least on that diagram, about a quarter of an inch, third of an inch higher than another horizontal line. And I'm not sure which one matches up with the peak between here. I'm also confused, because if you look at 405-23W, what would, what would be, what I would consider the top, where the EQ line matches on the horizontal line of that roof, it seems to intersect perpendicularly with the lower piece of wall, which seems to be elevated above it. But in the picture in front of us that's displayed, it does not. So, I don't know what is what, and I'm hoping that somebody can explain to me the differences. Or if the one I'm looking at in my materials is incorrect, and that one's correct, or that one's incorrect, and this one's correct?
The diagram, the smaller sheet diagram is correct.
This one's correct?
Yes. This is, we have, we have been at this, I stand up, you can hope to hear me, that the, we have submitted diagrams at various times to address various issues in front of this committee. When we were asked to produce a diagram to focus on building height, we went back to our architectural drawings to produce the most accurate version of that height representation, which is what you have in the smaller diagram.
Thank you. Just, and please excuse my tone, I've been told to speak up, because we only have one mic, so I'm not yelling at anybody, I just am trying to project. So, the EQ line, the way that I see it on the roof, is where you measure the midpoint from. So, that, that peak of the roof seems to intersect, and there's a piece of wall higher than the top peak of the roof, correct?
Correct.
Do we know how high that piece of wall over the roof line will be?
The piece of wall that attaches to the chimney?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, it's here.
Well, the, to, to, the parapet, the parapet, which is...
I'm not fancy with these terms.
Sorry, which is this, this piece?
Yes.
Is about a foot above the...
That would be a foot.
Above the roof.
And I know this is not to scale, but if that's about a foot, it looks like the faux chimneys, for lack of a better term, is maybe about six, seven feet above peak of roof? Would that be accurate?
That would be accurate.
Architecturally speaking and design? So, that would be a seven-foot elevation of design over roof peak.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions are cleared up.
Good. Any other commission members? This is a public hearing. Any members of the public like to comment, please feel free. Show of hands, people that would like to comment. Okay, we'll start with the, keep your hands up again, please. The gentleman is right behind Mr. Avery. I believe he has a blue sweater on.
Do we know?
Okay, if you'd like to, please stand up. And, yeah, we just have one mic reform here, so if you could, please speak up, name and address, or if you actually would like to come up a little closer to the mic, so feel free.
Richard Cromble, 528 North Main Street. I had a... Richard Cromble, 528 North Main Street. I had a couple of questions. There was earlier reference to the 85th percentile in terms of determining the speed of the traffic. Can I have a number for that? How many miles per hour is that, that's being used in that calculation for site distances?
Sure. The applicant would like to?
Sure, 36 miles per hour.
Okay, so that's the assumed speed in terms of calculating. And I guess the posted speed is 25 in that zone?
Yeah, so that was what was collected by DOT in 2019, which is the most recent data. So, they have tubes out on the road that they collect.
Okay. I did raise the concern about construction traffic moving through the intersection. That's added traffic above and beyond what goes through there today. And I had suggested that traffic exiting Christian Street, and I'm glad to see that Choak did respond to that, that that traffic be directed up toward East Main Street, and subsequently, the traffic that is entering, or at times exiting, perhaps, the North Elm Street entrance, go south to Center Street to keep it out of that intersection, to prevent that intersection from being further congested. I don't know if there's any, if there's been any thought to doing that, or, you know, how contractors will be directed, when heavy trucks, or just the number of trucks, you know, that they bring to the site every day, you know, how all that traffic is going to go through there.
Okay, we'll ask the applicant on that additional question.
Okay. I'm just clarifying that Choak has offered to provide for the safety of pedestrians, mostly the students, a crossing guard at, when class periods are changing, or when there's an event going on, that there will be some sort of crossing guard during the construction period, which I guess is expected to go now, we're being told about a year. Is that, I just want to confirm that that's what I'm hearing.
We'll ask the applicant.
Okay. And also, event parking. That field accommodated, I'm going to say by my count, at times, more than 100 cars. Where are those cars going to go? I know that you do have some parking in the garage, but you still had field parking, and I just don't know, you know, where all that traffic is going to go, whether it's grandparents' day, or alumni reunion, or the Symphony Orchestra. You know, I don't know where that can be accommodated. I've heard, you know, up on, you know, up by Roots Rees, you know, there's some parking up there.
Yeah, I believe we indicated across from the track.
Right. I'm not sure if there's sufficient parking up there, or how people will be incented to park at a greater distance, you know, and then have to get back down to the event, you know, wherever it's occurring. So, thank you.
Okay, good. Before I go to the next member of the public, we have, if Choak would, Representative Choak just addressed those. The first question, just as far as the construction traffic, as far as how that's going to be handled, as far as directions coming in, going out?
Thank you.
Just your name and address.
Oh, thank you. Patrick Durbin, representing Joe Rosemary Hall, 333 Christian Street, here in Wallingford. As that gentleman suggested, that will be our conversation with the contractor, is to send trucks out towards East Main Street, and south to North Elm Street, or sorry, south to Center Street. There may be some cases, or some point in time where that can't happen, but we will be mindful of that, and that is our intent. And when we worked with Mr. Puccini on the entrance from the construction entrance into the site from North Elm Street, he had the benefit of that, as it does keep the trucks out of the, out of the intersection.
Crossing guard?
With regard to crossing guard, so, we would use the term a flagger, because crossing guards don't actually have the ability to move traffic through the intersection, but we are committed to safety of everybody, the public, everyone who's using that intersection motorists. And we will commit to having a flagger out there when there is heavy truck traffic. We will work with the construction company to, you know, they're the ones who typically do it. And then, event parking. Sure. So, for the 10 events or so per year that currently uses that, what we call the bleacher lot, that grass lot, a lot of them will be able to relocate to the new Colony Hall parking lot, which we added 120 parking spaces when that building was built. It does serve-
And again, that's the space, that's the lot across the street essentially from the track, is that correct?
That is correct. That is correct. That's 120 new spaces that Choak didn't have four years ago. There are additional fields up near and adjacent to that paved parking lot that we can also use for overflow if we need to. And as it relates to event parking, a lot of the events, whether it's grandparents' day, or commencement, or reunion, or even the Wallingford Symphony Orchestra, it actually helps to keep cars on that side of the street, because they're going to Colony Hall or the Great Lawn, which is the area behind the Paul Mellon Arts Center. So, it actually is a better spot for cars to park who are coming for the majority of those external events.
And there are, someone, if you're having football games or something like that, from that lot, there are internal sidewalks that would, correct, take you all the way down to where you have the crossing, the flashing crossing lights, is that correct?
Correct.
So, no one would have to walk down on the, on the road or on the side of the road?
That is correct.
Correct, is the internal sidewalks?
That is correct. And when we have special events, I know there was a question about how do we direct people, I can, I have copies for everybody if you want, but when the Wallingford Symphony Orchestra was played at Choak a month ago, that's on the right, you know, we have, we have Choak community safety officers out there and signage, so we use a combination of both signage, if a lot becomes full, and direct them up to the Rosemary Hall lot, or the Rosemary Lane lots. And we have community safety officers, you know, trained to do parting.
All right, thank you. Please, the next, please, the gentleman in the white, did you have your hand up, sir? Yes, you'll be next, and then the gentleman in the black behind, and then we'll proceed.
Yeah, my name is Alaric Slapecki, and I live on 57 Jobs Road in Wallingford. You know, part of my concern is still, as I heard you guys point out about the pedestrian safety, and while I agree with that, I haven't heard anything about, you know, a crosswalk light or an actual light at that intersection. You know, I go through that intersection four times a day, to and from work, lunch, and all that stuff. You know, at any point in time, you can be stuck for 20 minutes. You know, with the pedestrian traffic that you have, I see what you guys are, where you're going with it, and I agree with it. But my issue is, you have an issue where you're not stacking up. You know, you got, you got five people, or you got five more coming down the street. Well, the five more up there are running down and catch up to you. So, at no point, you know, the cars are sitting there, and at some point, someone's going to gun it to try to get through, especially in an event where you have 70-plus cars coming in there. I do worry about the pedestrian traffic there. So, I haven't heard in all that, you know, a crosswalk light where, you know, there's a stop where everybody groups up, crosswalk goes, everybody crosses, it's fine. But I haven't heard any of that. You know, I've heard with the, you know, down the road, you have the two things, but there's never a flagger there. You know, the kids, mostly, they cross into the center and the, across the way and all that stuff. So, you know, for me, the entrance is problematic. The building, Choak, you guys do a great job, all buildings are built, you know, I really, that's not really my issue, it's the entrance is going to cause some issues. And I know with the traffic says and that, but you're not adding 70 cars coming in now. So, if anyone's been to a concert, you know how that works. You know, so, that's my concern. And, you know, I'm going to have a kid going to Moses Y soon, so, you know. Mom and bear will get pretty mad if I can't pick the kid up in a quick and elevating situation, so, you know. But yeah, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Good. Thank you. And the gentleman in the back with the white shirt.
So, Rob Blanchard, Curtis Avenue. I'd like to put a different perspective on the height of the building. If you could pull this memo out that you were looking at.
You're looking at the same one?
Yeah, on the one, yeah, on the first page. So, on the first, on the first page, they're saying that the peak of the roof is where A and B are, right? That's the peak of the roof. What, what happens with the roof between there? Forget the size of the walls. What's, what is the roof between there?
Gentlemen, have we?
Yes, please.
It's like 20, based on scale of that drawing, it's about 25 feet from A to B.
He will at some point. Gentlemen, want to?
Ready for an answer?
Yes.
Okay. In a, in a portion of that roof, there is, there is a, an area of screen mechanical equipment.
No, I mean, what's the shape of that, not, not if there's screen mechanical equipment?
Pardon, the shape of this or?
Uh, there's a wall that comes down inside, and then there is a well.
There's roofing material that needs to go between point A and point B.
Excuse me?
There's roofing material that goes between point A and point B, just regardless of what they put on top of it. What is the shape of the actual roof, regardless of what's on top of it? I haven't heard that answer.
So, the shape of the roof?
The bottom of the well is a, is a flat surface.
So, it's flat. So, it's a flat roof. It's not a pitch roof. It's a flat roof. It has 25 feet of flat roof. The standard in our regulations for flat roofs is it can't have more than a three-inch pitch per 12 inches of horizontal move. It's a flat roof. So, the standard for measuring a flat roof, based on our, on our regulations, and my lawyer confirmed this, is, is that you measure not to the midpoint of the, of the pitch of the roof, you measure to the top. So, based on what they've shown us, and the fact that there's a flat roof, this building is too tall, because you're measuring to the flat roof. The pitch is just cheating the height, right? It could have gone straight up and had a flat roof, and been the same height as if it has a pitch and a flat roof.
Okay. Yes, I'd like-
If I may just clarify, the flat-
Name and address, sir.
This, Kevin Smith, also with Robert Stern Architects. The flat roof is below, is the dotted line that is in that sketch, that is below the 30-foot elevation. So, that, that flat area is well, well below the 30-foot height limitation.
Okay. So, so if that pitch carried up to its natural peak, so it's a flat roof?
No, it goes up and then back down.
So, there's a valley in the middle?
There is a valley in the middle, yes.
I, I, I think that just goes to confirm that, that you can't approve based on this information, because you need to really see what the, what the height of the building is. You know, Steve Lazarus confirmed, my attorney, who looked at this, says this does not comply with the regulations. So, so I think we need to make sure that we're, we're looking at this correctly, and if a vote comes on it tonight, it's most certainly going to be appealed. Other issues. So, I wanted to go back to the last meeting and talk about the premise for having this building where it was. We, the school representatives came out and said that boarding school enrollment is going down, schools are closing, we're, we need to remain competitive, we're at risk here. And I think the Record Journal article headline summed it up the best. They said, "Choak, new admissions building needed to ensure the school's future." Okay? So, I think it's important to consider, because we had a little bit more time in that meeting, and other issues that were brought up were that they have 3,000 applications a year for 200 to 225 spots. That's 15 to 1. And they haven't had enrollment change in 20 years. So, that doesn't sound to me like a school that's been significantly impacted by, by COVID or other financial issues. And I think to, sorry about that. So, it's kind of, it's kind of unrealistic to sit here and say that that's the premise for the building. I don't think, I think a lot of people in the room would put their hand up and say, you know, I don't think, if they don't get this building in this location, that the school's going to suffer gravely or go out of business. I think that's, you know, that's irresponsible to even state that.
Good.
Next. So, I'd like to reference a comment that Mr. Cohen made in the last meeting. Mr. Cohen said that he thought that he couldn't think of a better place to put the, put the building.
I think he said it was appropriate. I don't want to pull words out of Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, let me test now.
No, so, so, all I'm saying is that, you know, there are better places for the building. In fact, in 2020, the school applied for a variance for the Student Activity Center. So, I think everybody knows that big white building that's up behind the football field on Christian Street, that huge majestic building that's there, they applied for a variance for that. I don't think anybody would, would disagree that that's a better spot for this building. But then, you know, the, I guess the other thing I'd like to point out about that, is that building has been emptied for six or seven years. It's been sitting there empty. They built a new student center up on Beaumont Avenue, and they're sitting there with an empty building that they could have used this for, and instead, they're trying to crowd the intersection, and there's obviously a fair amount of concern about crowding out the intersection and other issues related to this building.
Thanks.
So, talked about the height, the traffic and safety. I mean, I think some of the had proposed LEDs. I think that got pushed aside for, based on what the town engineer said. But, you know, glittery markings on the street, those aren't solutions to a, to dangerous and congested intersection. I think you have the traffic memo now from November 11th that SLR submit. I think if you look at the last page of that memo from November 11th, I think you all have it. I'll give you time to pull it out. Well, on the last, there's a diagram on the last page of that document. And the diagram shows the intersection, and it shows some ghosts, ghost, like transparent cars posted, painted in there. So, so they have four cars on the westbound side on Christian Street. And they're already approaching the area where that garage entrance is. So, I'll pass this picture around again, which, which I think most of you have seen. Right? And I think the, you can, the queues, so, so the SLR memo says 20-plus cars in queue. That's, that's at least 30-plus, and including seven school buses. And that's a, yeah, sorry. And that's, that's a routine occurrence. That's a routine occurrence there. And we're talking about putting a driveway right next to the intersection. And I think there was a second traffic memo. And there was also a memo on traffic from the town engineer with police drone video footage, which I haven't seen. But I think there's a glaring omission in every single one of those memos, is there's nothing that talks about the speed at which traffic turns off of Elm Street and heads eastbound toward the garage entrance on Christian Street. So, we did a little impromptu traffic study ourselves, and it takes four plus or minus seconds for a car to turn that corner and hit that spot. Right? So, that creates some substantial concerns, given the pictures that you've seen that have the fence in the way. I don't know if I have enough of these for everybody, but this is also something that was submit. It's in your file. I think it's 204, uh, 4, is it 403, 23, 405-23Z, I believe? And it's the second page in that?
Yeah.
This is something that they submit. So, I think if you look at this, you can see how close it is from the intersection, and see the obstruction. So, first, you're coming up on a grade that is 9% grade, it's very steep, that has a wall to the left of you. And then when you clear the wall, you have the fence that's standing next to you. Now, you're pulling out into a line of traffic and having cars potentially turn off of Elm Street that are going to run in, potentially run into those if they can't get into those, get into that line of traffic that's coming down. That's, that's a pretty glaring omission that, that nobody has talked about. I think that's something that needs to be investigated. And I know that the rules, the rules are that it has to generate 100 cars peak traffic for it to require a traffic study. You know, that's the zoning rules. But if it doesn't generate 100 cars- But if it doesn't generate 100 cars, it doesn't preclude a traffic study. It doesn't... If we think that the intersection is congested enough and there's enough concern about the intersection, we should be requesting a traffic study on this. It's wholly appropriate, given how this intersection has evolved over time, that it's necessary for us and for Choat to make sure we collectively understand what the intersection is working like. And there's a reluctance to do that, which is extremely concerning. So, that, I guess, traffic leads into parking. And I'm looking at this, and I'm having trouble with the math because I think the level of parking actually decreases on that parcel. So, my recollection is that there's 15 people working in the admissions building, and the parking garage will have 76 spots. So, that leaves about 58 garage spots, and we're removing 66 on that road where they're pulling it off the road down there. When you factor in the fact that three or four families at a time go on a tour, now you have a shortage of parking that's even more pronounced. So, we have a school that's putting up a 14,000-square-foot building that can house a lot more than three or four families at any given point in time. You have less parking. And, you know, I don't think it's appropriate, and I can anticipate what a response might be, is that, well, we have parking across the street that's still staying there in the old admissions building or something along those lines. But the reality is, those buildings are going to be repurposed at some point, too. We don't know because we're not privy to those rules. But they're going to repurpose that, then at some point in time, they're going to repurpose this Student Activity Center, which is the empty building that they could have put the admissions building in. And that's going to require some type of parking at some point. So, there's a complete lack of vision around what the whole parking situation must be. I heard before they put in about 120 spots up for Colony Hall, but they took out 20 or 30 next to the Paul Mellon Art Center at the same time. So, there's all these little trade-offs here and there that net-net have brought less parking to the school. And, you know, we as neighbors are very cute, very aware of that because we often have students parking on our streets. Public street, they could park there, but, you know, it's a consideration issue. We all... And then, I think the other thing, I recall, I'm not sure... I'm sorry, I don't remember who was that said it. But one of the commissioners asked for more information on day students. I haven't heard or seen anything about it. They wanted to see how many day students... How many drive and where they park, and I'll add besides on our local streets. And to the best of my knowledge, all the spots that they're taking out on that Gunpowder Creek Road down there were our day students. I may be off on that, but that's what's been historically the case. So, they're moving the day students who are now going to be pulling into, out of a garage where there's a line of traffic and have cars coming around the corner at them, potentially creating a hazard. Now, I know they're... They have driver's licenses, so they're legally allowed to drive. But, you know, there's such a thing as experience, and you have inexperienced drivers in a potentially dangerous situation pulling out into lines of traffic. So, I'd like to come back to my comments on March 15th and get some perspective from you on why we as a town haven't pursued redistricting for a planned development district for Choat. They continue to develop piecemeal in a residential zone when they could be put in... It couldn't be at college, does it? We could have a planned development district, right? And...
I think that, just to answer your question, I think that's something that, you know, Mr. Pacheco, I think he did some comments on and said that that was correct, if I'm wrong, Mr. Pacheco. You were suggesting that perhaps be something that would be of value to discuss with Choat. Is that fair to say?
I would think so. Choat was willing to discuss it, but obviously it would take time and effort and performance to master plans, so...
Yeah. I mean, I think, well, time is not my friend as someone who's up here, right? I think this is something that needs to be addressed because we know that they're surveying the diagonal corner to this for tearing down dorms and putting up new dorms. They're looking at putting in new ice rinks. They pulled the football field, but all the knowledge I've heard is it's going back in. They're going to be adding to the athletic center. All of these things add up, and to say that, you know, we need to take time to do this is difficult. I know you, the commission, set up a moratorium on warehouse development until they can review the zone. I would suggest that we do the same thing in this case. I understand that this application is not part of that, but I think it's something long-term that we as a town do for ourselves. It doesn't jeopardize their educational mission. They can focus on what they need to do and build their long-term plans, right? But they need... But they have to do it with an open book and make sure that we as a town and you as a commission get your say.
Good. We'll take your suggestion, Howard. I don't want to cut you short, but I suspect there's other members of the public that would like to speak. So, I guess I would ask, if you could perhaps just start to wrap up.
Yep. I have two more quick things.
Sure.
One, I think this meeting is being held in violation because our regulations say that a sign should be put up, and the regulations say the sign shall, not may, shall be maintained until the day following the public hearing. If I'm not mistaken, this is still the public hearing. They don't say it can come down after the opening of the public hearing. They say it's the day following the public hearing. So, this meeting is a violation because they took down the sign several weeks ago. So, I think based on that alone, that this application should be denied because they're not going to put it back up now. The damage is done. People didn't know that this meeting was happening. And then, the last thing, for some crazy reason, we vote on this tonight, and if it gets approved, there's a few conditions I would suggest. One, so they're taking out the student spots on that road. I don't know when those are coming out, but there should be no student parking on the side streets, Academy, Curtis, High, and North Streets. There should be no construction traffic on any of those streets, and there should be no construction parking on those same streets. They should have post... They should post signs on each of those streets indicating that the construction vehicles are not to go down these streets. And as an alternative to what they're suggesting for a flow of traffic, construction entrances and construction... I honestly think they can internalize all of those construction traffic. They have a road that has an entrance, currently has an entrance on Elm Street, it currently has an entrance on Christian Street, and they can use that road, those existing spaces, instead of putting new curb cuts and running traffic close to that intersection. They can internalize it and make sure that they're driving traffic and keeping it all together. So, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, before we go to other members of the public, just one question on day students, number of day students. Could that be completed, address that for someone?
Sure. In the current year, which is a typical year, we have 39 day students who are permitted to mark on campus. It's worth noting that day students typically stay past 6:00 p.m. every day because they have our arts and sports practice after the typical class day that ends at 12:00. And so, the queuing that was brought up, at least by that segment of 39 students or 40 cars, would not be impacted by that queuing, which happens around 3:30 in the afternoon.
What time do they generally come to school?
Classes start at 8:00 a.m., so they're there before 8:00.
So, before 8:00?
Yeah, they have to be in the class. Class starts at 8:00, so they have to be in their classroom building at the desk by 8:00.
And again, the parking, they're going to their park mostly, I believe you represented it, Gunfield, Gunpowder, whatever.
And I will say, it's a violation of our student handbook for students to not park there. So, if students are parking on Curtis Ave or Main Street, we see it, I mean, we want to know about it. We... I mean, it's a rule for our students only.
But once those spaces, those 66, 67 spaces are eliminated, then they'll park where?
The plan right now is to park in the garage.
In the garage? Okay. All right. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Everybody raise their hands. Okay, we'll go over to here. First, the young lady, then the gentleman behind her.
Kristen Liu, 59 Curtis Avenue. My two main concerns are the loss of open space and then the effect that the building will have on this intersection that we've all been talking about, and just the neighborhood overall. I think all of us would agree that we benefit from being neighbors of Choat, and one of those main benefits is the open space on campus and the open space that we get in our downtown. It's of value. That open space is getting chipped away really quickly with the buildings that we've seen go up already. This piecemeal effect that Mr. Blanchard just referred to. Just within the past 10 years, we've had three to four major builds as well as many smaller builds. It affects the neighborhood. It affects the overall campus footprint. So, that's an aesthetic issue, but it is also a quality of life issue, not just for Choat, but for the neighborhood and for the town overall. I think beyond aesthetics, though, this open space issue is part of the larger importance of overall traffic and safety, and it all plays and it all ties up together. So, regarding traffic, we've mentioned on a daily basis, at least twice a day, we have this school opening and closing between Rock Hill and Moses Y, and the buses and the cars lining up. I can be stuck in that for, you know, 15, 20 minutes sometimes coming home if I come home at a different time than I usually do. There's no way that having an additional driveway and new traffic added to that space won't have a negative impact on cars, but also pedestrian safety. I'm more often a walker in the area than I am a driver. So, and I also have children who I like to send out to go walk in the neighborhood. And I... That's my biggest concern, is that pedestrian safety, both for Choat students and for the neighbors. These negative impacts to the immediate neighborhood and the overall town, I think, will be felt on a daily basis, but will be especially pinched in these major event days when the parking, that field parking is gone. We have major concerns, the residents of Curtis Avenue have major concerns about streets like ours getting used, both for the construction traffic of new buildings, but also just for, you know, Graduation Day, Grandparents' Day, Alumni Event, whatever it might be, or perhaps students. It sounds like that would be a violation for students. But it fills up quickly already with just Choat fans parking on our street or maintenance people parking on the street all day long, every day. So, we feel the impact as it is. Choat's current admission office is perhaps one of the most beautiful spots on campus. If you've ever stood inside the lobby where students wait while they're waiting to be admitted, they're looking out on this gorgeous pond with a fountain and a quad behind them. It was laughable to hear at a previous meeting, I don't think it was this commission, to hear the folks representing Choat describe it, sort of fame it as like, oh, the former infirmary, as if that was a terrible hardship. It's a beautiful building. It's not a hardship currently. Choat is not losing admissions, applicants, based on this admissions building. So, I don't see any hardship that they must build this building, and if they do, the SAC has been sitting there open, and it's in basically that same space, just a little ways off of this intersection. So, I, for that reason and for all the others that have been brought up so far, I hope that you will vote no on this application.
Thank you. And again, the gentleman right behind her.
Jared Liu, Curtis Avenue. And, you know, I would rather be here speaking on behalf of Choat. I've said before, you know, we have many good friends who are at Choat. I consider Allison a friend. I very much respect Bill and Patrick, who I see here from Choat tonight. But, you know, I think they, as Kristen said, they bring a lot of cachet to the town, and I think they are good for Wallingford, and hopefully they see it as a reciprocal relationship in that regard. I don't think the process had to be as contentious as this. In fact, I spoke in favor of Choat when they were looking to put an elevator in at the event practice. I think it was the right thing to do. There was some question about whether that was the right location for the elevator, but I think it was the right location to do. And I think the neighbors have shown that they can be supportive and good players in this process when they're treated that way. And I don't think it had to be as contentious as this. I think right from the start, the neighbors were asking for the process to involve them. You know, we went to ZBA, and the applicant referenced that this project could absolutely not go forward if they didn't get the variance. They didn't get the variance. Here we still are. It's kind of disingenuous. You know, there was a postcard that went around about a meet and greet at 7:30 in the morning one day. Didn't say anything about this project being on the conversational list. It was just a meet and greet. And then, apparently, only a few people were able to make that time, and it was represented by the applicant as, we hosted this meeting to talk about these plans, and only, you know, two people showed up, or whatever small number. I think that was kind of disingenuous. I think Kristen's point's exactly right. This was referenced as a hardship. It was the old infirmary. This is the department that I used to work in in Choat. I've been to all of the peer schools, the most immediate peer schools. I think this admission building represents very well compared to our peer schools. I don't see that as a hardship. I think actually it's a real highlight for Choat. Their decision, but the town's decision is that, you know, is this the right location for the traffic, for the pedestrians? Is this the right location for the school traffic? And I think, you know, Rob mentioned, too, about the parking. You know, I could give you many examples, most winter time, where our street doesn't get plowed on half the side because probably it's not some Choat student, but some Choat parent or some other person associated with the school parks on the street. Plow will be out there laying on the horn, looking for a neighbor to come move the car. There's no neighbor there because that person is, you know, several buildings away. Our street doesn't get plowed. You know, there's the types of things that, as neighbors, I think, we're asking simply to be involved in the process. And so, I think it didn't have to be so contentious. It could have gone a better way. But, you know, I think the icing on the cake was, you know, that the applicant then seemed to coordinate for an editorial to go into the paper saying, oh, this is just one disgruntled citizen. Well, I mean, even from this meeting here tonight, I think you can see, it's not one person. And, you know, continually, the neighborhood has concerns, and they're simply asking to be a part of that process. And so, what I would encourage the applicant to do, if this does not look forward, is to pause on the project. And, you know, I think probably the applicant could even pause the project right now, but to pause it and to involve the neighborhood, and that's really what we're asking.
Thanks. Other members of the public? Yes, gentleman in the back. And just before you start speaking, who other, what other members of the public would like to speak? So, this gentleman and then this gentleman behind will be our last members of the public.
Mike Vado, North Elm Street. This is the... It's still my thunder for the most part. But I agree and I concur with all the traffic issues and safety issues. And I would hate to see a traffic light on that intersection. I've, you know, gone through that intersection over 50 years, and there is a little bit of a problem already with kids crossing the street. It's been handled pretty well, I think. This is going to sound corny, but the biggest thing I'm concerned, not the biggest, but one of the greatest things I'm concerned about is the aesthetics. When you come down Christian Street from East Main Street, and you go down that hill and you see that beautiful lodge and the other beautiful home next to it and that open space, you're going to take that all away with a building. When you come down the other way from Christian Street, going east, you see that beautiful field and the football field and the hill where the kids sled, all that's going to be taken away. It's a beautiful area. Choat keeps the place beautiful. Why put a building in the middle of all that beauty? It just doesn't make any sense when there's other places where it could go. And I agree with you. That infirmary is a beautiful, gorgeous building, and I'm sure it's still usable. Thank you.
Thank you. And the gentleman in the back, please.
TJ Pagers, North Elm Street. My concern is the pedestrian safety. I think Choat has done a great job with the flashing lights for the students to cross. I think it's a well-lit area. I know a lot of times when I'm driving through there at nighttime, I do have a hard time seeing the students until they actually get to the crosswalk and hit the button. But I don't know if there's anything to do about that. But one idea that is strange, that I just went up to the University of New Hampshire to watch a basketball game, and their gym is located right by their main thoroughfare that goes into their college. And their parking lot is on the other side of the street. And what they did is they built a tunnel to connect the two, and so, all the traffic goes through that tunnel. And I'm thinking with this project, if you're talking about excavating down for building that garage underneath that building, I don't know if now would be a great time to actually think about building a tunnel underneath Christian Street to supply pedestrian traffic.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, at this point in time, I'll bring it back to the commission with any thoughts from the commission. Mr. Cohen, then, or Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I appreciated all the comments from the public. You know, one of the big issues for me was really trying to find out what the opposition is to this building. You know, Choate has a lot of professionals who decided where this building needs to go. You know, they spend a lot of time, you know, they run this as a professional business education facility. They made a major business decision where they want to have this building. You know, some of the comments about, you know, where to place this building is like saying to, I don't know, general motors, where, you know, where do you want to have, you know, the next factory or something? This is their decision, we want to have it as long as it meets our regulations. Traffic is not Choate's problem, as far as I can tell. Traffic is Wallingford's problem. There's Mr. Blanchard's photo. These are Wallingford school buses. These cities are Wallingford residents. You know, Police Chief Ventura's document, Allison Kapusinski's document that corrected some of the things, the traffic study from SLR, really, if the public hasn't seen this, and I think some of you have, really details what's going on with the traffic. Yes, this building is going to affect some of the traffic flow around Choate, no question. It's going to affect some of the parking, no question. But you know what? It's not the major contributor to, you know, these traffic problems.
Can you answer that? We're not getting into a discussion.
Yeah, I'm expressing my opinion.
Yeah, the public has its chance to, you know, voice their concerns. I think the commission has been, you know, very respectful of that, so we just ask for people to reciprocate.
You know, again, if you get a copy of Police Chief John Ventura's assessment of the traffic, look at it, it'll explain a lot as far as, you know, how this traffic is going through that intersection. Certainly, somebody pointed out the exit from, entrance and exit from the parking garage. So if somebody wants to exit that parking garage with this line of traffic, you know, maybe they're going to make a right-hand turn and go around this, or they're going to have to wait for a considered driver to let them merge in. I don't see where, you know, traffic entering this parking garage in the morning or afternoon, again, is going to add anything to the traffic other than, it's already happening now, the traffic's just going different places. So, you know, again, the location of the building, really, I wanted to get a feel for what everybody was concerned about, and the traffic is Wallingford's problem. Now, I went down, you know, Elm Street tonight, and I've gone through there a number of times. You know, the students actually do a good job crossing that street. They push the button, those lights flash, they walk across the street. You know, I don't know if they do that 100% of the time, but they do. And it was very light traffic tonight, and, you know, they still did it, did the process street pretty safely. Now, with some of the traffic improvements similar that have been recommended and, you know, at some point will be conditions of approval, you know, that's going to make that intersection, you know, as safe as it can be. So again, I really urge you to get a copy of those couple of memos from Allison and Police Chief, and, you know, read through it. And again, I have to respect their professional opinion as far as, you know, how they measure the traffic. And, you know, the SLR traffic study, I thought, was pretty comprehensive. I have experience with that engineer who did that, the traffic study, and he's a pretty straight-up guy, and I think his numbers were fairly accurate. Okay, so that's the traffic. To me, that, you know, is really one of my biggest concerns in having the safety of the students foremost, you know, in our decision. Now, going back to, you know, this building, you know, Mr. Blanchard brought up the fact that this is a flat roof. And guess what? The applicant said the flat roof is under 30 feet, which would be allowed under our If this is considered a flat roof, this will be allowed. Now, I'm just stating that because, you know, I still believe we need to get a definitive opinion on, you know, what the height of this roof is going to be. So that, in my mind, is still an outstanding admission. Now, that being said, I'll just finish up with some of the concerns that the public brought up, and as far as Choate has responded, I do think Choate can be a little more helpful in some of the residents' concerns. You know, the snow plowing, you know, certainly, traffic on Curtis Street. You know, last time I asked if, you know, there was concern about all the delivery trucks along through Curtis Street and some of the surrounding areas to avoid that intersection, and Mr. Durbin was going to see if he could look into that, but apparently that is not the case. So I would, again, respect, request that. You know, it's a simple matter to send a note to your vendors to say, hey, can you avoid Curtis Street if you can? I think the neighbors deserve a little... I'll lay it to you later. I think the neighbors do deserve a little respect because they do have to deal with, you know, the surroundings. You know, Choate does a pretty good job, but again, there have been some complaints, and I think they're easy enough to see if you can manage some of those. So, you know, again, I would appreciate if you would, you know, see if you could do something about the traffic through Curtis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hine, I believe you will.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure whether we're going to vote on this application tonight or not. I just had made a note that at the last hearing, I had asked for a diagram showing the line of sight coming out of the garage. And I appreciate the diagram that was shown tonight, but that's not really what I was looking for. What I was really looking for is sort of the diagrams that Mr. Eu, and Mr. Eukers, I don't know if you have that there or not, but he had taken some pictures, and we had gone over during our discussion with the traffic engineer. And I got the sense that the applicant did not feel that those pictures were accurate. And what I want to see is, I want to see pictures of what it would look like if a car's coming out. What would a driver see if they looked left, and what would they see if they looked right? You know, and how would that, where would the fence be? And what, if any effect, would that have on somebody's line of sight? That's what I, that's kind of what I want to see because, you know, even when I look at this, you know, to the left, there's a wall. You know, you're coming up from underground, you have a wall to your left, you have a sloping hill to your left as well. And I personally want to see what that's going to look like when somebody's pulling out of it. That diagram today was great, but I sort of want to see, I mean, in actuality, what's anybody going to see when they look left? What are they going to see when they look right? And where's that fence going to be in relation to somebody pulling up to that stop? That's sort of what I would like to see if we don't vote on this thing. That's just something that I, that would bring me some comfort. I agree with Commissioner Cohen that the traffic is already there. We have a lot of traffic, and a lot of it is Wallingford-based, Wallingford-created traffic. But the question then becomes, knowing that that's there, what, if any effect, would this have on that traffic and on the safety of people along that intersection? There was some reference to a traffic study. I would just throw you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner, is that something that we could ask for? I'm not voting on this tonight. It's something that I think, at least from my perspective, you have a traffic study done, the traffic study comes back and says, no problem, this is perfectly fine, then what is anybody ever going to say? It comes back and it says, there is a problem, well, then we know we have a problem and we have to address it. I have found those traffic studies to be helpful in the past. I understand that. One of the questions I would ask the applicant is, what you provided a full traffic study, would that be considered a traffic study?
It's a traffic.
It's termed a memo, it's not, you know, and it's a little less dense than the traffic studies that we would normally see.
Yeah, Emily K. from SLR, Emily can add on to the specifics of what is elevated in the traffic study. But so you provided that memo, and then did the subsequent visualizations of counting and seeing the stacking, and then it was also verified by the town engineer's drone footage with the police department. It's those type of things that get added into the whole traffic study. So some of the counts, some of the timing of when it is congested and then open. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, Emily Foster with SLR Consulting, I would just like to add that the purpose of a traffic study is to analyze the effect that the proposed development will have on the traffic. So it does not look at the existing traffic and look at mitigations for the existing traffic. It looks at the difference between the existing traffic and the proposed traffic and how to mitigate it back to existing conditions. In the traffic memo, we state that there will be no added traffic to the intersection because we are simply moving a use from just down the street up a little way. So the same movements, the same traffic movements will be at that intersection because it's on the same side of the intersection, the proposed building and the existing use. So whether it's called a traffic memo, traffic study, I mean, that, those are just words, but we do analyze the safety at the intersection and the effect that the building will have on the traffic.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. I've just found that in the past, when we've had one of these things, these traffic studies done, that the expert, the consultant usually comes back with some very good suggestions that we hadn't thought about.
And we included some in the traffic.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's just kind of my thought on it. I think, you know, and if, as you say, it's true that this is going to have no effect, I mean, then this just supports that position, and you're, you know, what's, what are any of these, the people that are objecting to this project going to say on that? That the traffic issue kind of goes away, right? And we can say that we did our due diligence, and Choate, as they told you, respect them.
Mr. Chairman, that's just ignoring the memo from your town engineer. It's her professional opinion, I'm just reading her words, right? It remains, "The proposed project as presented does not increase vehicular or pedestrian traffic to the North Elm Street and Christian Street intersection to a level that will warrant mitigation." So the engineer who was there to protect the town has that opinion. The engineer, who apparently must be the hired gun for the applicant, has that position. I'm not sure that one or two or three or 10 more studies are going to be, you know, they may all be disparate, but it seems to me that the one party in this equation who would have your interest most at heart, I think we would too, but most at heart would be the town engineer. And she's concluded that now, so. And that wasn't just, you know, as I understand from reading the memo, that wasn't done just at her desk, that was done with reviewing the information provided by the police, reviewing the information provided by SLR. And, I mean, when I read it, frankly, with all the respect, I thought it was a very powerful memo, I said, I mean, this was really dispositive in the way I looked at it. This is, it's not often that I see a report like that, certainly, some of my clients, but it was nice to see it.
Fair enough. Thank you. I guess from my perspective, I don't believe this commission is going to be acting on this application this evening. I think there's, you know, several questions that have, you know, have been raised, you know, on the application. But just getting back to some of the, you know, comments that Mr. Cohen made, I kind of wholly agree with the majority of comments that he made. I don't think it's the town's position to tell Choate where they should or shouldn't place the building. I understand, you know, people in the community have concerns as far as where they'd like to see it, how they'd like to see Choate use some of their other buildings, the former, I guess, Student Activity Building, but, you know, it's Choate's decision to make, I think, as Mr. Cohen indicated, to make a business decision as far as what they think is best for them. So I don't believe it's really our position to say, I don't like it here, I want you to put it somewhere else. And again, as far as the traffic, I believe the applicant has certainly articulated the memo that was put together by, you know, our town engineer and looked at the situation out there as far as traffic. And I don't see what the benefit of a traffic study would do in that, you know, it's, as the applicant's traffic engineer indicated, we're not adding additional traffic, it's kind of a repositioning of the traffic that's still going to go through the intersection. You know, I certainly, you know, understand that at certain times, there is an issue with traffic during certain times. It's an inconvenience, it's going to be an inconvenience whether, if this building gets approved or, you know, or doesn't get approved, it's going to be out there. I think the mitigations that are being proposed or recommended by our town engineer, which Choate's agreed to, I think that they go and they have, you know, they have, you know, improved the situation out there. So for, you know, from my perspective, as far as a traffic study, I just want to see how that's going to add any additional light. I just want to see how that's going to add any additional light. The, the concern that I have, and, you know, maybe at, at this meeting, we somewhat beat it to death, is the building height, does it comply, does it comply? Is it chimneys, is it whatever? I, I think that needs, in my mind at least, needs, you know, additional, additional discussion and some clarification. And then I think it's up to the commission to make a, a determination whether or not what's been, you know, presented by the applicant, if that meets our regulations. Again, we suggested that, I believe it was Mr. Lazarus, that he had, has a certain opinion, could be valuable for him to attend our next meeting because I fully expect we'll have a next meeting on this. And certainly can express, you know, their opinion. You know, the other issue that I think needs to be just addressed is, and that's a, I think, a very brief conversation Mr. Puccini can have with our corporate counsel with respect to the, the posting and respect to the sign, whether that is an issue or not an issue. I know there was some comment, uh, I think from Mr. Hind, as far as, you know, the site distance and all of that coming out of the garage. I guess when I look at this, from the stop part of the road, you gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably about 16 feet. You have, you know, where the, or really just from the, uh, from the sidewalk out to the road, that's on your plans. It's, it's just shy of 12 feet. So I guess in, in my mind, I think there's, there's plenty of room for someone coming out to have, you know, a good sightline on that, so. Other commission members that'd like to, any gentlemen to my left would like to make any comments? Then I'll ask Mr. Puccini for any final comments, or again, then it's Mr. Perrin if you'd like to make some comments. But yes, Mr. Allison.
Just quickly, Mr. Chairman, um, I, if, um, the, if this is continued, I would like to see, um, some more drawings of the roof line and the height issue, um, so that we can come into that. There's been a lot of talk about Mr. Lazarus's email. I don't, either he's here to present an expert opinion and he presents evidence or he's not. I don't think, I don't think we have the ability as a commission to say, oh, we got an email, we want to now drag you in. I don't think it works like that. And I could be wrong, but I really don't think it works like that. Other than that, um, I, I think that I'm satisfied with the sightline images that we've seen in the package, uh, coming from the garage. I can visualize how it would look inverted, um, but I can understand how other commissioners may want to see the perspectives and that could be helpful. But really, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, the height and, uh, overall height issue is something that I think is not going to be resolved in my mind tonight.
I think you're correct with that. Uh, Mr. Perrin?
I think everybody else has spoken for me.
And Mr. Fitzsimmons, you always have some excellent comments, but don't feel fee- good. Mr. Puccini, do you have any final comments, any final requests for the applicant?
Uh, just to, I've told them multiple times, keep the sign up forever if needed, um, until this is over with. So hopefully the sign really isn't down, but I can go check after this and...
But if it is down, again, you need to have that discussion with our corporate counsel.
According to the regs, you would have the right to deny the application.
But again, we may have the right, but again, check with our, I'd like to have an opinion from our corporate counsel. You gentlemen have any questions as far as what, uh, additional things we may be looking for?
I think so, I've got, I think the notes there were good last time.
And Mr. Puccini, what is the timeline on this place? When do we have to make the decision on this application?
Uh, they have to request an extension, as Mr. said, uh, initial 65 days. So they have to extend it up to 65 days.
So they'd have to agree to an extension?
Correct, which we do.
So the applicant indicated they agree, it agrees to the extension. Okay, with this, uh, gentlemen, unless you'd like to make any final comments?
I think we're good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we will continue this to, uh, our next one's meeting? Yeah, and I'll take a, actually, I'll take a vote to continue the, uh, the...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue application 405-23, special permit to the Mission Center, associated underground apartment by Choak Rosemary Hall, 59 North Elm Street.
Second. Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor? Uh, any extensions? Thank you. Yes, thank you. Looking forward to seeing you guys.
Different room?
Uh, I don't know, depends on our budget. All right, just wait a few moments for, uh, some of the members of the public to, uh... And hopefully we have the applicant for, uh, a site plan. Good. All right, our next order of business, this new business, a site plan, uh, 6,825 square foot addition to an existing manufacturing facility, advanced turbine 856 North Main Street Extension. Even sir, you can come right up to the front table if you, if you're preparing for your presentation. And Mr. Allison, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have the application of site plan. We have an interdepartmental referral from our environmental plan, planner, dated receipt February 15th, 2023. A inspection report from the Wallenford Fire Department, inspection date March 15th, 2023. Interdepartmental referral from Scott Shipman, senior engineer, dated receipt February 15th, 2023. Stormwater management and maintenance plan prepared by Jeffrey Hoffman-Hodge LLC, received April 5th, 2023. And topographical survey, uh, marked revised and received April 5th, 2023.
And if the applicant would please introduce himself and, uh, begin your presentation. And sir, if you're going to use that map, if you could put it up on the laser place.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Marcus Puttuck. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor with Godfrey Hoffman-Hodge, 26 Broadway, North Haven, for the record. This is an existing commercial site, um, or industrial site, I should say.
Sir, if you could just get on the other side so they could pick it up for, uh, our lodger audience, like, start watching it every Monday evening.
So I brought this existing map just to show the, the original, um, proposed construction of this site back in 1980. At that time, there was a proposed building expansion in the future. That building expansion has been proposed a few times and would never meet the, the zoning regulations because of, uh, density, uh, questions. Those regulations have more recently been changed. And so we now, um, are proposing, uh, uh, an addition to the building, um, to allow, um, for the expansion of this, uh, of this use, um, for the owner of this, this place. So essentially, it's a 6,900 square foot addition to the building. It's 50 foot by the full width of the building at the rear of the, the parcel. North Main Street Extension is in the front here on the left-hand side of the, the, the page. Building addition in the back, taking out a grassed island in the middle in between there two loading banks because they find that for loading and unloading of vehicles and whatnot, the grass is, is really in the way and, and that isn't conducive to the way that they operate. And so they'd like to add a concrete pad there to make it a little more robust for the, for trucks as they arrive and, and pave the remaining portion of that grassed area, add a driveway for a drive-up, not a loading dock, but actually drive into the building, um, for the, for the new expansion of the building. Um, the remaining, the remaining site features essentially remain the same. We went to wetlands because, uh, and, and were approved, um, last Wednesday, in fact, because when the site was excavated and storm drainage was created, um, at, at the rear of the property, over time, that has become a wetland and qualifies under the regulations of the Inland Wetlands Act. And therefore, we needed their approval and blessing to, to create this new building and this new driveway as close as they are to the, to the wetlands, and that has been approved. That's really zoning-wise, we comply with the regulations, we meet all the parking and height setback requirements set forth in the, in your regulations. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of the commissioners might have about any specifics.
Before I go to commission members, Mr. Puccini, any, uh, any comments that you may have?
I know, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward application, uh, just in addition with an access driveway. We worked with, I worked with the environmental planner just to, uh, hopefully update and, uh, maintain some of these, uh, existing stormwater management features. So that'll just be a condition of approval, uh, but that's pretty much all I have.
Commission members, is there any comments, questions from the applicant? Seeing none, uh, unless you'd like to make any final comments?
I, that's it, it's fairly straightforward, other than the wetlands, it was fairly straightforward, I thought.
I would agree with you. At this point in time, I'd entertain a, uh, a motion on the, uh, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve application 206-23, advanced turbine systems, 856 North Main Street Extension. Site plan approved, request to construct a 6,825 square foot building addition, an access driveway to an existing manufacturing facility located at 856 South Main Street Extension. On plans entitled property and topography, or, or topographic, uh, survey prepared for advanced turbine services dated 11/21/2022 and revised to March 29th, 2023. Final comments? Just to approve my apologies. One, comments from the fire marshal's office dated 3/15/2023. Two, comments from inter-office memorandum from senior engineer Scott Shipman to the planning and zoning department dated, uh, March 29th, 2023. Three, that the operations and maintenance plan is, is filed on the land records to ensure that all stormwater practices on-site are properly maintained. Four, an erosion, uh, erosion and sediment control bond in the amount of $5,500 hours. And six, I'm sorry, and five, six copies and approved final plans forward to the planning and zoning office.
We have a motion on the application, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with, uh, Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 Yes, and yes. Now, your application's been approved, sir. All right, it brings us down to our new business, which are two accessory apartments. And I don't believe we, uh, have any of the applicants here this evening.
Because they were notified multiple times, so.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening.
They may have ran out of patience, I'm not sure.
Did it get well?
Is it, is it in the hallway, is there anyone left in the hall?
I did have contact with one of the applicants.
Yeah, I'll let you, if you would check, please.
They're all for Choak.
All right, well, we'll, uh, I guess we'll try their, see what kind of patients they have at, uh, next month.
You know, it may, uh, it may be a benefit because I'm not sure as far as with, uh, when we take up the Choak application again next month. I guess we may want to consider, and I look it up to the commission at the meeting, if you wanted to take the accessory apartments first.
Yes, I would suggest.
Then I would suggest that...
You need a motion on that?
No, no, we don't, no, we don't need a motion on that at all. All right, so with that then, Mr. Puccini, you'd lead us through the, uh, rest of the agenda with the bond releases and then, uh, reports from officers and staff.
Yes, so, uh, site plan, 940 South Colony Road, that bond can be released. I'm just going to vote on that can be released.
Is that the only one that could be released?
And then the Wallenford, Peter Holm can also be released.
So at this time, I'd entertain a motion, uh, to release the two bonds which, uh, Mr. Puccini had recommended?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we release the bonds on application 210-16, site plan 5 Northfield LLC, Hartford Material LLC, 940 South Colony Road. An application 210-20, site plan Wallenford-Funerholm 809 North Main Street Extension.
We have a motion to release both bonds, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. And wrap it up.
Administrative approvals, any questions on those? Uh, the ZBA decisions, the questions on the decisions, uh, for the ZBA notice for next week's meeting?
Anyone? You're on a roll.
And finally, we have the zoning enforcement report. I think it kind of outlines, uh, some of the issues we've been dealing with. Mainly she, most recently, did a sign sweep, so we've been getting phone calls non-stop about the flags and signage that, you know, shouldn't be out. We are in, we are in the, uh, the stages of trying to rewrite the sign regulations, so we're hoping to get that wrapped up in, uh, hopefully within a couple of months. But, um, essentially, it's a lot of, a lot of court referrals, a lot of just smaller violations. So, and obviously with the, I believe there's legislation coming out regarding outdoor dining as well from the state. So we just received that today from Janice, so that might be something we have to discuss in the near future. Any questions on the...
I believe Mr. Fitzsimmons had some questions.
Yeah, you, you kind of hinted at my question. So the governor's emergency order is over, correct?
I believe it's over in, either it was...
A couple of days or somewhere. Yeah, so outdoor dining was permitted by executive order, governor's order.
Correct.
And you just, you just said in your part of your report, a new law's come out? Or is this a bill that did not get passed?
I believe it's, I got it sent by Janice today right before I left, so I haven't got a chance to look at it. But, um, I believe it was either passed or is going to be passed in like the next week, something like that. Effective May 1st, I believe, so.
In what way?
So is it between now and then, people are going to want to put up their plates, their, their tables, like what's going to...
Yeah, she said we're going to have to discuss it this week, so I'm going to discuss it more this week. But essentially, it's, it's requiring just, uh, I believe it's accessory use to an allowed use. So you can essentially have it per administrative site plan approval.
I mean, quite frankly, we're going to Simpson Court, where the town put up the barricades, got rid of the parking. That's not going to re, that's not going to happen this year, it sounds like, because...
No, that's going to have to come before the commission now. So basically, anything would have to comply with zoning, come before the commission.
Are we handling like administrative approval or are we...
I think it depends on the scenario. Obviously, something like Simpson Court would probably, we'd like to see a meeting, I'm going to guess, um, you know, obviously...
That's the council, aren't they? Yeah, yeah. That's a council thing, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to say that would...
Because they block off.
Because that's a, that's a, much like, correct if I'm wrong, but it's much like doing the dining, uh, on sidewalks. I mean, the, the town, the council, whatever approves that, not the commission. And certainly on Simpson Court to have dining there, now, that's a road. And I think that that's, the town or the town council, the town government would have to, uh, yeah, would, would have to, would have to approve that.
At this point, too, it would probably become more of an 24 issues. At this point, too, it would probably become more of an even 24 issue, so could it be like town property?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, it's something that, we're not the ones, we may make the, the final decision, but the initial decision, I would think, has to come from, from town government.
Yeah, something like that would probably have to-
But as far as just with, you know, with, just with the outside dining, because, you know, with the pandemic, with the governor's orders, you could have here, you know, in the parking areas and all of that, you could have, you know, outside dining. Is, what's being proposed, is that, what does that do with, with that?
It'd have to be approved per site plan approval and accessory use, so either administratively or through a meeting.
Yeah, I guess what I, just, you know, maybe for the, you know, for the next meeting or prior to that, and I'm not sure how commission members feel, you know, about the outside dining that we've seen in, you know, some of the businesses, I guess, from my perspective, I don't think that that's ever really been that much of an issue. You know, it's taken up some parking spaces for, you know, some of the restaurants, but to the best of my knowledge, I don't think it's caused any, any issues, you know, congestion, parking and all of that.
I mean, I believe we have the right, if you wanted to, as a commission, to even go less restrictive than what the state's proposing, so.
Yeah, so I think that's something we would, you know, want to look at, because I think for a lot of, you know, a lot of businesses, you know, around town and all of that, that, you know, they had the outside dining, whether or not some of them would still want to, you know, have that or not, I think it's something worth, you know, worth looking, you know, worth looking into, because I think one of the issues that comes up with, with some businesses, if the town does decide to close off a portion of Simpson Court, while certainly that's nice, it's beneficial, but I'm sure some other businesses say, well, gee, wait a minute, it's an advantage for them, it doesn't benefit me, what are you doing for me?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's something we want to look at and get some consideration for.
I think with how much went on during COVID, I think it would be very difficult enforcement-wise at this point to just say, get everything, I think it would be a long, a long road, and so I think it might be advantageous for us to look at and make it not easy, but at least, you know, a little bit simpler.
Yeah, to provide some flexibility, because again, I don't think it was an issue with, with most of the businesses that had, you know, some outside dining.
I think it benefits them, you know, obviously.
Well, benefits them, it just benefits the town also.
Yeah.
Just making sure we're establishing the process.
Yeah.
That's more important.
Yeah, exactly, so I'll send that memo out tomorrow, though she just said it today, so.
All right, seems like we're at the end of our agenda. If any commission members provide with no further comments, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the Wildfire Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Monday, April 10th, 2023.
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, word, chairman. Thank you very much, everyone.